Good morning, John. I can hear you.
Hi, Peter. You sound like you're in the closet.
I can hear you to you. I'm not in the closet.
Okay. I'm referring to that closet in the back of the room over there. The door is closed. Maybe we could hear you better. Something's wrong with the audio, obviously.
Jastlo is showing up.
I think he said Zoom.
Yeah, he'll be late on Zoom.
He'll be late on Zoom. All right, well, I'll let Sylvia come back. We can probably start, right? Okay. So I'll officially call to order the regular meeting of Coachella Valley Water District Board of Directors here in Coachella. Today is September 27, 2022, and I'll start with these introductory remarks. I'd like to make clear for the record that this meeting is being conducted as permitted under AB 361 and Board Resolution 2022-10. Today's meeting is presented in a hybrid format in person at CBWD's Coachella office and via Zoom. AB 361 suspends certain requirements of the Brown Act, allowing district board members to participate in person or by video conference. Members of the public may participate in person or via Zoom. Zoom details are listed on the meeting agenda, and also, the meeting is streamed live on our website and YouTube channels. Members of the public who wish to comment on any item on the agenda or within the jurisdiction of the district will have three minutes. Public comment may be provided in person via Zoom or by emailing the clerk of the board. Such comments will become part of the meeting record. And so we will have board members, at least one, possibly two, participating remotely today, so I'll make sure to call on them during each item to make sure they have an opportunity to participate. And we will do all of the votes by roll call vote. I think that's that. And so would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And roll call, please.
Good morning, President Powell.
Here.
Vice President Estrada will be joining us late possibly, and I'll note the time for the official record. Director Bianco.
Here.
Director Aguilar.
Here.
And Director Nelson.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, so good. We're good to go. Do we know of any additions, deletions, or adjustments to today's agenda?
Yes, sir. And I don't see anybody jumping to their feet to correct me, so I think we're okay.
I'm not aware of any either. Is there anybody wishing to make public comment at this time?
Mr. President, we do. We have a member of the public here, Mr. Ventura Gutierrez. If you could please come to the podium.
Good morning.
Good morning. President Powell, members of the board. My name is Ventura Gutierrez. I've been a premier resident of the City of Coachella at 52754 Calle Avila, one of three neighborhoods on 8850 when I arrived as a premier resident of this country and the valley. And I am here today as a member of the Planning Commission for the City of Coachella for the second occasion. First time I was a member of the Planning Commission was in 1979 as president of that commission. And I'm here today to beg you, to ask you to consider meeting with the city's planning department, with Mr. Gabriel Perez, and members of the city council to consider supporting the city's proposal before LFCO, the local agency information commission, on the 27th October in Riverside, because the City of Indio wants as its sphere of influence what historically has been the sphere of influence in the general plan of the city for many, many years. They want as a sphere of influence from Avenue 50 to 52 down to Calhoun Street. And we're very concerned. And I direct the following remarks to President John Powell, as the who, and including your father, as the lived, knew, know, as the history of this valley from the Dust Bowl days, from the Depression, as to the Anderson family and other families, as they here in the valley. When Coachella was the hub of this valley, okay? When Coachella had the movie theater, the train station, the bus station, the water well on Grapefruit Boulevard and Sixth Streets, as where the first Mason Lodge was also established 104 years ago, the jail, the court, everything that gyrated in the late 50s, 60s towards Indio, when La Quinta had like 30 homes, okay, when it was all sand and agriculture. And in 1979, when I was the president of the Planning Commission, as the with Henry Tisaka as the planning department director, we, in the general plan and zoning and infrastructure, we planned everything to grow west in the future, as they, and that is beginning to happen, as their growth and development is coming full cycle back to Coachella. And we just think that it's not historically ethical or morally correct that now that Coachella is coming into its own, that the City of Indio wants to encroach and make as part of the sphere of influence 50 to 52 down to Calhoun Street. As they, my specific request is that you, if you're able to do it, or the board, as the allow, as the a member or two without violating the Brown Act from your board, or somebody from your planning commission to contact Gabriel Perez. His cellphone number is on the business card, just to get together, as they, and review, as they, a couple of agreements that were signed between the City of Coachella and the Water District in 2008, 2013, where this friendly amicable, as they, agreements were initiated with the grant that the Water District received, as they, in, what was it, in 2008, I believe? No, no, in 79, when I was the president of the Planning Commission, to construct the wastewater collection system to serve that residential neighborhood on the northeast corner of Avenue 56 and Jackson. And then later transferred that, as they, to the City of Coachella. As the pleas, as the, the time for growth and development for the City of Coachella, as they, has come. And all I ask is that you consider sending down with the city's planning department director, city officials, so that they can go over the proposal that we're making before LFCO on the 27th of October. And thereafter, as they, if you wish, as they, if it's within you, as they, support the proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Gutierrez. Do we have any other members of the public wishing to make comment at this time? Yes, sir. Come on up.
Thank you. Thank you, members of the Board of Directors, for meeting, period, and for inviting the public to attend as well. And I want to extend my appreciation to Mr. Gutierrez for his commentary on the history of the Coachella Valley and the City of Coachella and the Water District in itself. And I want to invite him to read perhaps the publication that the Coachella Valley Water District has put out some years ago called "The Golden Years." And it pretty much gives a full coverage of the contributions by both the Coachella Valley Water District, the City of Coachella, Indio, and all the communities surrounding to this entire valley. He did a very well, a very, he gave us a very well-informed presentation. I want to thank him for that, and I want to thank the board for listening to it. However, I do want to bring to point that we are in an extremely dynamic period at this time in the entire Coachella Valley. There's a lot of things going on. One of the things I would like to talk about, of course, is the termination or the end of the contract between IID and CBWD and the Energy Service. But this is not the time to. I want to become more informed, more familiar with the district, and I want you also to become more informed with my position and my outlook before we have any further discussion on that. But as far as the history, I just appreciate all the contribution by both the City of Coachella, the Water District, all the surrounding communities as well. Thank you very much.
For the record, could we have your name, please?
Oh, I'm so sorry. My name is Ed Loon. I introduced myself at a previous meeting as a former employee of the Coachella Valley Water District.
Yeah, thank you.
And whatever I can do to continue my service, I'm here for that.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you very much. Good. Do we have anyone else wishing to make public comment at this time?
I just want to make sure we don't have, we have an individual on Zoom.
Yeah, that's fine.
For those joining us on Zoom, if you'd like to speak during a public comment or an item, please use the raise hand feature, and we will call on you. There he is. Okay. Okay, we do have one. We have Mr. Robert Griffith. Mr. Griffith, I'm going to go ahead and unmute you, and you'll have three minutes to speak, please. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you.
Hello? Okay. I got a little red microphone. Sorry, I just wanted to introduce myself to President Powell and the rest of the CBWD Board of Directors and staff. My name is Robert Griffith. I was just recently appointed to fill the vacancy for Randy Duncan in District Two at Mission Springs Water District. And so I wanted to say good morning, introduce myself, and that I will be seeing you. And I see that you actually do have in-person attendance, so you will probably see me next month. So have a wonderful meeting, and I look forward to meeting you all.
Good. Yeah, thank you. Thank you, and congratulations. Is there anybody else? Now's your chance. Okay. Hearing them. We have a special presentation today. This is the retirement of our Director of Finance, Jeffrey Keel. And I believe I have something I can read here. Yep. So, good morning, Jeff. Jeff Keel became CBWD's Director of Finance on July 9, 2018. Jeff's career in public service spans over 37 years throughout the state of California. On September 16, 2022, Jeff entered retirement to begin new adventures and bountiful experiences. Jeff looks forward to volunteering more with his church, where he assists in building houses for the less fortunate in Mexico. Additionally, Jeff will be spending more quality time with his wife Joyce, his children, and their new grandbaby, Yoko. The Coachella Valley Water District appreciates and recognizes his commitment to serving the district, its board members, and its constituents for the past four years. As CBWD begins its search for the next Director of Finance, we would be remiss not to acknowledge his contribution and impact, and we wish him well, all the best in his retirement. So, yeah, come on up. We've got something for you. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, of course. I appreciate it. Appreciate it.
You good, Joyce? Yeah. Because I don't know where Jesse's going.
Thank you.
Now, your turn. Do you have anything you want to say?
Yes, I'm going to go to the podium.
Oh, the microphone. We do have a microphone over here.
Thank you, President Powell. And Jim, members of board. I didn't want to speak from the microphone, not just because my wife is here, my wife is yours, but my, I believe all three of my kids are probably watching online. My son is in Hong Kong, so he's ready to go to bed. And my daughters are over in LA, so I wanted them to be able to watch and hear. But, you know, I'm very humbled by this. I had actually, and just wanted to come to the board to thank you all. I had no thought of any honor for me, really. I just wanted to say thank you all. It's been a pleasure, only four years. This is a unique organization, and I've said it before, this is the best governmental organization in this valley. I absolutely know that as a fact. And the staff is just wonderful. And these four years, I've gotten to know the amazing work that goes on behind the scenes. The public has no idea, really, the importance of this organization and the effort that goes on. It's really remarkable, and I appreciate it. And it's been really capstone for my career to be able to work here. Jim's the best CEO I've ever worked for, and I really appreciate him. And, you know, he's a great leader, and you're blessed to have him. But, yeah, I am totally blessed. I'm happy. You know, for those who may be contemplating making the same decision. It's a good thing. It's a good thing. But, yeah. And God is blessing this district, too. And there's a lot of people in this organization are praying for all of you. And it's just really good, a really happy place, and I'm very appreciative, so. I think that's all I have to say.
Go out and enjoy yourself.
I am. I am. Oh, my, I picked up a job. Every Wednesday morning, I drive over to LA to babysit my granddaughter, and I'm there Wednesdays and Thursdays. It's a better job. Yeah, it couldn't be better. But, so, thank you again. I appreciate it. And I hope you forgive me if I miss Carrie's annual financial report. So, thank you again.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thanks, Jeff. Good luck.
All right, thank you.
Stay well.
Smells good out there.
Is it warming here?
No, it smells good out there. Like somebody's cooking a barbecue. Probably something's on fire.
Well, once the alarms go off, identify the closest exit to you. Either here or in the back.
That way. Okay. So consent calendar, we have items 6A through H. Just want to make sure we have good communications with our remote directors before we really go forward. Peter, are you still with us?
Yes, sir. I hear you well.
I can almost not hear.
I can hear you well, John.
Oh, that's a little better. That's a little better.
Okay.
How about Director Estrada? Is he on yet?
He is not joined us.
Okay, so we have, good, good. All right, so I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar. I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
All's second, Nelson.
Makes it easy. Roll call, please.
President Powell.
Aye.
Director Bianco.
Aye.
Director Aguilar.
Aye.
And Director Nelson.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, so that passed 4-0, one absent. Onto the action calendar, and I apologize, I may need to spend a little extra time on these just for lack of, I had a little problem with my packet, trying to read the BAIs. But first one, 8A. David, go ahead.
Good morning. Purpose of this item is to approve the solicitation of bids for the Johnson Street Drain Improvement Project. The project includes the replacement of approximately 350 linear feet of concrete pipeline with high-density polyethylene pipe and the installation of nine manholes over the existing reach of the drain to facilitate improved access for maintenance. The pipeline runs relatively flat, and there is a continuous backup of sediment buildup within the pipeline. And the purpose of the project is to address that and improve the maintenance access. And with that, I'll take any questions.
This is Canal Fund?
Yes.
I'll move item 8A.
One second. Okay. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
President Powell.
Aye.
Director Bianco.
Aye.
Director Aguilar.
Aye.
And Director Nelson.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, David.
Thank you.
Pretty straightforward. And then we have a finance item. Hi, Carrie.
Good morning.
Go ahead.
So this item is to approve a resolution authorizing the general manager to execute a financial assistance application with State Water Resource Board for a massive planning grant. And the estimated amount that we're going to be requesting at this point is about $2.4 million. But as we go through the application, it may change, it might go up, but that's expected minimum that we're going to be applying for. So if you have any other questions.
You know, on that $60 million loan, did we get the lower interest rate?
I think we have not gotten a full confirmation because we don't have.
I know it's a different item.
But I think it's positive. Yeah, I think we're going to be getting that 1.875.
At the more favorable rate. Just checking. Yeah. Sorry, if I interrupted you, I apologize.
It's okay. So if you have any questions, so this is for a domestic water fund, and it is encompassing the East Coachella Valley Planning Project into multiple projects. So if you have any specific questions on this application.
You know, kind of related, but just going back to what I saw in the general manager report on the budget, I think the biggest variance we had was grants received. I don't know if that was a timing thing or what, but we had like five or six million dollars more of grant funds received than what we had budgeted for the fiscal year that just ended, right?
Yes. So when we budget the grants, we kind of estimate how much we're going to be doing for construction, because we based it, it doesn't depend on, it doesn't matter on when we actually get the cash, it's when we spend the money that we're entitled to submit for that reimbursement. So if our project is accelerated or we have more expenditure on our capital project, then it entitles us to bill them to reimburse those funds to us. So you saw a more significant increase in that as we push forward with projects.
Yeah, yeah. And of course, grants don't need to be repaid, so.
Yes.
They're good.
They're good, yes.
It's easy to vote yes on those. Better than loans. I'll make a motion.
Second.
So we have a motion to approve in a second. And let's do the roll call vote, please.
President Powell.
Aye.
Director Bianco.
Aye.
Director Aguilar.
Aye.
And Director Nelson.
Aye.
Thank you.
Passed 4-0. Thanks, Carrie.
Thank you.
And we have a human resource, item C. Directors and officers liability insurance.
Good morning, Blanca.
Hi, Blanca, good morning. Go ahead.
Good morning. This board action item is to request authorization for the purchase of the directors and officers' liability coverage for this upcoming year in the amount of $630,000 with AEGIS.
I just had one question. So it says under exposure, employee count, 540. Why is that number so high when it's just directors and officers?
The application request for all of employees. At any point, any employee can be considered a director or officer if they're working in the capacity.
So it's actually covering everybody?
It's probably smart to do that.
Got it. I'll make a motion to approve.
You're making your job easy.
Second. Second.
So the overall premium was up 5%?
Correct.
Which is probably not too bad. Okay, so we have a motion in a second. Roll call vote, please.
President Powell.
Aye.
Director Bianco.
Aye.
Director Aguilar.
Aye.
And Director Nelson.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Blanca. Yeah, and then, you know, under 9A, we have written communications, which I guess this one was received after the packet was put together, because there was no, nothing was passed.
Correct. We received it yesterday afternoon, and instead of waiting till the October 11th agenda, I went ahead and added, and we revised it and distributed a copy of the comment.
Yeah, okay.
Staff is currently working on contacting or.
I know. I wonder about some of the facts that were claimed in that. I mean, I would imagine there would be significant water savings, just from my own experience, but we don't know. I mean, that's something that could be verified, I guess.
It's the letter concerning artificial turf.
Right.
Can you come up to the podium?
If you want to come up, come up here. The premise was that if you put in artificial turf, but you still have some trees, you're not saving any water. And I bet you save a lot of water. You do, yeah. And it could be verified.
Yeah, I mean, a number of customers are replacing turf with artificial turf, and it does save a significant amount of water. And we could provide data to that person who submitted the comment and.
I mean, I'd say more of the risk is that if the trees are used to having a more dispersed wetting pattern, and then you go to, you know, where you're not irrigating the lawn anymore, you're just irrigating the trees.
Right.
The tree may not be able to adapt. It could go into shock and potentially die. That's more of the risk than, because you're going to save water.
Right, and over the summer, we actually, and I believe it was at July or August Water News, we included instructions or direction for customers on how to save trees when they replace their turf. Because that's, you know, like you said, you have to, you need a bigger ring around the tree to irrigate it initially. So we are trying to educate customers about saving their trees during the drought and when they switch to desert landscaping.
Right. Yeah, it's not just artificial turf. It would be the same problem with desert landscaping, because it's still a different way of applying the water to that area.
Yeah, and water management is responding to that customer, and we'll provide you with our response.
Okay. Thank you. Scott? Hey, we're on to board general comments. Why don't we start with Director Nelson?
Thank you, John. Yeah, I don't know if I have any specific comments this morning, except for that the discussions between the seven basin states continue on in trying to address the dry hydrology on the river. And there was a Water Education Foundation biannual Colorado River Symposium, which I'll report on in just a bit. So I guess that's all my comments.
Okay. Thank you. Director Aguilar.
Actually, not a comment, John, but just a quick question for staff. Have we, or if we have.
Okay, thank you. Director Aguilar.
Actually, not a comment, John, but just a quick question for staff. Have we, or if we have, where are we in our outreach to other cities regarding the rebate program? Scott?
Should have stayed up there.
No, I should have asked while you're up there.
Yeah, the only one I'm aware of is the Rancho Mirage, of course, Palm Desert, and I think we were talking to La Quinta, but I don't know where we are.
We're talking to Indian Wells right now, so the other two cities that were, and we're kind of phasing the, you know, the matching rebates in with the cities intentionally, because we have such a large demand and limited staff to get all the work done, so we still do want to reach out to Cathedral City and La Quinta, and we are applying for some grant funding for disadvantaged, or we're kind of collaboratively with CV Water Counts. We're looking at some disadvantaged community turf rebate funding, which could also be used for parts of Cathedral City, so.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Sure.
Director Bianco.
No comments.
And I will not have any either comments. Well, looking forward to the cool weather. It's coming.
Hey, John, Director Estrada has now joined our Zoom call, and I'm not sure if he has any comments.
Okay, great.
No, I don't have any comments. Thanks, Director Nelson, for giving President Powell.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Welcome.
You can see me. I don't think you can see me.
Yeah, and we're, I guess we're 10B. Are there any board requests for future agenda items? Hearing none. Let's get into the meeting reports. There are not very many of them here. First one is the Colorado River Board on September 14th.
Yeah, I'll start in on that. That was held in Ontario at our usual place near the airport. We had a number of presentations regarding the current hydrology and the ongoing discussions on the river. Afterwards, we had a section five contractors got together to discuss potential conservation methods and amounts, and so it was challenging, and it was productive.
Thank you.
And I was not there.
Okay. And then we had, the same day, the disadvantaged community infrastructure attack force. I was listed on that. I was not able to attend that one, but I imagine, Costello, you were on there?
Yeah, I was there. You know, project updates on all the different projects that the staff is working on. I think we had some good conversation with at least one particular project that we're working on, the suicide. It looked like we got some clarification on what needs to happen to move forward. I think we also maybe are getting some help from some county staff as it relates to some movements that we need to secure for the Avenue 66 project. So, I think in general, it was a good meeting, good update, and people connected.
Okay, thank you. September 15th, Coachella Valley Conservation Commission, Director Bianco.
There's some more property purchased in Palm Springs for conservation, and then the biggest thing was they're asking for support from the Conservation Commission for a new national monument, Chukawala National Monument, which basically covers Mecca Hills area all the way past down through Imperial Valley, all the way to the other side of I-10, and everybody's kind of held off on that until we find out how that's going to impact the cities of Mecca North Shore and the surrounding areas in there when it comes to flood control and what you can and what you can't do. So, I think the district's working on that.
Okay, thanks. And then we had the September 22 finance committee. Director Aguilar, Estrada.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, just briefly, we met on the 22nd and had our usual update from Chandler and from PFM on our returns in both our funds. Our returns, as you probably would expect, are down a little bit on the short term, but over the long term, we're still beating our benchmarks. Our actual total portfolio is value, market value is actually up considerably from the last report, primarily because of large deposits that we've made back into the fund. This is all in your reports that you guys get, so you can go to more detail about that. But interestingly enough, Carrie presented a report on the number of current grant and loan applications that are in process, and I thought it was impressive enough, I wanted just to mention it. We have 15 active grants and loans, 36 active awards, we have eight closed awards with a total value over $500 million in grants and loans, and that's a pretty impressive achievement, I think. So, I know there are some issues around some of the loan requirements, but I think in general, I think that's a pretty astounding achievement. And that was endless. Vice President Estrada has something else.
Great, great report. I just want to echo your comments, something that I mentioned to staff at the meeting was, you know, just how much effort they're putting into securing grant funding, free money from either the state, the Fed, and, you know, we're, staff's doing an amazing job, so I just want to thank them as well.
Yeah. Are there any other meetings that we need to report on?
Yeah, John, I have a few, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
On September 15th, I attended a call with Chris Harris and a number of tribal interests, mainly Matt Kinney and Darrell Vigil, to talk about California's kind of outlook and thought process in tribal engagement across the Colorado River Basin. It was a very productive conversation and trying to get tribal interest within the Colorado River Water Supply Community to be involved and at the table. It was a very good meeting, so that was September 15th. On September 16th, I attended a basin states discussion with the Federal Department of the Interior and the USBR, talking about the upcoming Water Education Foundation program, so we got set on that on September 16th. On September 20th through 25th, I participated in the Water Education Foundation Biannual Colorado River Symposium. It's a symposium with a number of speakers from the tribes and the federal government and the states and non-governmental organizations or NGOs, some water users, and it was a very productive conference. I was on a panel with the six other basin states, and it was a little bit contentious towards California in terms of not coming up with an agreement with Arizona in terms of the amount of water conservation that could take place in 2023 and 2024. So, that was a challenge for me, and I sat on that panel. And then the main issue on that is about evaporation losses, and there's different viewpoints from the six basin states versus California's viewpoint on how to address evaporation in the basin, and so that was the discussion there. Camille Tooten and Commissioner of the Bureau of Reclamation, as well as the Assistant Secretary Trujillo, and the Secretary Deb Holland were there to make comments about what could be done administratively in the basin that would conserve water for the system, including assessing evaporative losses, as well as discussing items like the Inflation Reduction Act and the other funding opportunities available for conservation. So, all in all, there were a lot of good discussions, and Robert Chang also attended, as well as Steve Abbott. So, that was 9/20 through 9/25, and then on Monday, 9/26, while I had some other obligations, I was in and out of a debrief from that meeting with the California agencies, just to talk about some of the issues that were raised, the directions heading in these discussions. So, that was on 9/26. So, thanks for the opportunity to report, and that concludes my remarks.
Thank you. Any others? Is there a motion to approve per diem for the meetings reported on?
I'll make the motion. Second.
There's a motion in a second. Roll call vote, please.
President Powell.
Aye.
Director Bianco.
Aye.
Director Aguilar.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. Vice President Estrada, my apologies.
Yes.
And Director Nelson.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, so that passed. General Manager.
Yes, sir. Good morning. Standard COVID report, zero qualifying cases right now. We've got three folks off work due to COVID-related situations. We've had four qualifying cases for the month of September to date, and unfortunately, I will not be attending the next board meeting on October 11th, but Robert will be covering for me. Robert is currently on the Colorado River tour with Scott Hunter and Victoria Lord and David Lacy, so they're out for the rest of this week.
Good.
Supporting a plane as we speak. Supporting a plane as we, and Director Nelson will also be on that same tour.
Good.
Yeah, so, Jim, just so you know, I had to cancel. I've had some work responsibilities regarding being available for court discussions, so I'm, I had to cancel from the tour. It was very unfortunate.
Oh, sorry to hear that, sir.
Yeah, okay. Do we have any comments from council today?
No comments today, other than we wish Jeff Faray a good vacation and thank you for the opportunity to be here today.
Well done, well done.
Thank you. Any departmental reports?
No, sir.
Good. So, at this time, board will recess into closed session to consider the items listed on the agenda, and we will reconvene and report out of closed session following that. The regular meeting is reconvened. We do not have any reportable action from closed session, and with no further business, we are adjourned.